Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Hamilton City Council, the regular meeting for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We're here at City Council Chambers, three forty-five High Street, Hamilton. And I do see some of the absolute best of Hamilton all sitting out there right now. Roll call.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Mab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have the quorum.
I'll start off by offering a prayer by Councilmember Carla Fear, all by the place of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service and let us be effective and decisive. In faith and confidence we pray, amen.
Prior to the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Hamilton County Deputy Larry Henderson and all other folks, deputies and police officers, since it's National Police Week, all the fallen law enforcement. Just a moment of silence if we could, please. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is National Police Week, and I know that there's symbolic events going on all across the nation. And ways saying thanks to all who've served in law enforcement and some who actually gave all. Okay, now go to special presentations, and the first one is Public Service Awards, signed by the Department of Human Resources. Jean, you want to tell us what this is about?
Yes, sir. And actually, we're going to deviate just a little bit. Before the Public Service Awards, I have some words that I'd like to offer to the Human Resources Department. Thank you, Council Mayor, for having us here tonight. I'm Jean Pope, and I'm the Human Resources Director and proudly serve the City of Hamilton. It's truly an honor to stand here before you today as we recognize the outstanding contributions of our City of Hamilton Human Resources Team. HR is often called the backbone of an organization, but here in Hamilton, we're so much more. We're the investigators ensuring fairness and compliance in all work matters. We are the first face of employment welcoming new talent and setting the tone for their journey. With the city, we are the comforters, providing support during life's challenges, whether it be through benefits, leave administration, or simply lending an ear to listen. We are also the strategists, helping shape policies that drive success, and the trainers who develop the leaders and the advocates, ensuring our employees feel heard, valued, and empowered. Today, we celebrate the heart and soul of our HR team and the individuals who go above and beyond every day.
Thank you. I will be brief and appreciate your patience. I'd like to call the first team member up here who is receiving the Culture Champion Award. The recipient of this award has gone above and beyond in fostering a positive work environment through their dedication. Employees feel engaged, valued, and connected. This individual embodies the spirit of teamwork, communication, and employee well-being. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Rebecca Kermeats. Thank you. The next individual is being recognized for recruitment and onboarding, setting the foundation for an employee's journey. And this award recognizes someone who ensures that the journey starts off strong. Their keen eye for talent, seamless onboarding process, and commitment to diversity and inclusion make them a standout in our field. Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Brittany Chapman. Our next individual is on vacation. Bless her. She needs one, as I'm sure do we all. But she is our benefits guardian. And behind every great workforce is someone making sure employees are supported with benefits, leave policies, and the resources that they need to maintain a good work-life balance. This award recognizes the individual who goes the extra mile to provide clarity, guidance, and advocacy for our employees. Let's please celebrate Emilia Solange Otero Carvahal. She's not here, but... And last, but certainly not least, the Growth Architect Award. Learning and development are key to an engaged and evolving workforce. This award honors an individual who has made an impact by equipping employees with the skills, knowledge -- would that I would have all this memorized -- and confidence they need to succeed. Their work ensures the City of Hamilton remains strong, innovative, and prepared for the future. Let's all applaud my second, Ms. Jennifer Cox. Each one of these members plays a vital role in making the City of Hamilton a great place to work. Their dedication, professionalism, excuse me, and heart do not go unnoticed. And tonight, we celebrate all that you do. Congratulations to the award winners in the HR department. I am blessed to work with these women, these amazing women, every day. And it is my pleasure and honor to serve alongside them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's a lot to follow. What a surprise. Okay, do you want to give me the clicker? So, good evening, Council, City Manager, Mayor Mohler, and audience. Public Service Recognition Week is May fourth through May tenth. This is a time that we, the City of Hamilton, recognize some of our staff. Employees have the opportunity to nominate coworkers that exemplify one or more of our core values. Tonight, we'll be honoring those employees that were chosen for the various core awards. So, without further ado, we will call up our first honoree, Deana Witt. So, Deana was nominated by several employees. I don't think, for the time that I've done this, that we've had so many people nominate just one person, this one person, so many. So, she was nominated by Rich Engel, Scott Hoover, Tyler Bab, Nick Lauer, Ryan Mullins, Curtis Rouse, and Brett Noonan, all from her Department of Engineering. And this is what her team had to share about her. Deana Witt has been a dedicated member of the City of Hamilton's Traffic Engineering Department for sixteen years. Since beginning her career with the city in two thousand eight, she served with integrity and pride as a public service technician, becoming a familiar and a trusted face throughout our community. In her role, Deana manages on-street parking meters, handles enforcement responsibilities, and maintains operational support at locations like the McDougal Garage. Her job brings her into contact with people from all walks of life, and regardless of the situation, Deana consistently treats everyone with dignity, patience, and respect. She's truly embodiment of professionalism. Deana takes pride in her work, and it shows in everything she does, whether it's collecting meter revenue in inclement weather, or responding after hours to fix a gate malfunction at the garage. She never hesitates to go above and beyond. Her responsibilities, reliability, and the ability to calmly and respectfully handle any task, no matter how big or how small, make her an invaluable asset to our team. Her colleagues describe her as polite, helpful, and always joyful to work with. She completes every assignment with enthusiasm and gratitude, often responding with an absolutely, or you are welcome, without hesitation. I've heard those words from you, Deana, too. Deana's attitude is contagious, lifting the spirits of those around her and setting a high standard for workplace conduct. Rain or shine, summer heat or winter chill, Deana does her job with a smile on her face and a positive outlook. But what truly sets Deana apart is her unwavering commitment to others. She routinely puts the needs of her coworkers, residents, and the city above her own. Her respectful demeanor, kind heart, and selfless nature are evident both in and outside of the workplace. Deana is a shining example of what it means to serve with respect, and she exemplifies every quality this award stands for. She does her job quietly and humbly, with a grace that inspires all of us. The City of Hamilton is fortunate to have her, and she is truly deserving of the Respect Award. Congratulations.
My name is Scott Hoover. I'm the Traffic Operations Manager. I've been lucky enough to know Deana for about eighteen years now. Is that right? So, I can truly tell you that everything you just heard Rebecca say is true. There's days where I'm usually running pretty hot, and I'm talking to Deana, and I'm like, you know, I just need to calm down. Like, this is who you need to be like. So, I can tell you that all that stuff is definitely true. And we all love Deana. She's, you know, if it's midnight and somebody went through the McDougal parking gates and we're talking about what to do, she's very, she just gets it done and does it very easily. So, I'm thankful to have Deana, not just because she's a great employee, but she truly is a great person. So, thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you.
I don't get a chance to sit down and talk with Deana very much, but seeing is believing because I see her work. When I'm out walking from place to place, building to building, I see her doing her job with a smile, working hard, and as you can tell, your co-employees, your teammates, do see that. So, I'm honored to give this to you, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, certificate of recognition, award of Deana Witt, in recognition of being selected for the two thousand twenty-five Public Service Respect Award. Signed by myself and also signed by City Manager Craig Bukite. And I don't think you want to speak much. I think I've heard that. But instead of you speaking, how about a real loud round of applause for her?
Thank you. All right. Our next award winner is Mr. Mark Minery, and his award is Passion for Hamilton. So, Mark and Mr. Eichelberger, is he here? Would you like to come up? Chief Eichelberger, yes. Okay. Mark Minery began his career with the City of Hamilton as a firefighter in two thousand and two. In two thousand and eight, he was promoted to paramedic supervisor and then promoted again in two thousand fourteen as a paramedic coordinator. Mark was nominated by Peggy Bangy. This is what Peggy has to say. I would like to recommend Mark Minery for the Passion for Hamilton Award. I first worked with Mark Minery at the Butler County Fairgrounds during the COVID-nineteen vaccination efforts in two thousand twenty. Boy, we all remember those drive-through vaccinations. I was immediately impressed by his passion for helping and serving the residents who came through our drive-through clinic. He also worked tirelessly to vaccinate homebound individuals, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the community. His dedication and energy inspired the rest of the team. As we put in long hours during the challenging time, Mark brought a smile to all of us. Fast forward two thousand twenty-five, and our paths have crossed again. I'm now involved with the Service Plus Program at Miami Regionals, an American Corps initiative hosted by the Center for Social Impact at Miami University Regionals. When our group of Service Plus students needed CPR and first aid certification, their program manager reached out to me for resources. Without hesitation, I called Mark. He agreed to provide the training, which took place in February. Through both of these experiences, I have seen firsthand Mark's deep commitment to our community, its residents, and institution like the Miami Regionals. His passion for service is truly inspiring.
So, I've known Mark for nearly thirty years, from our time at Baden High School. And we both came up through the fire department about the same time. He's had about a year or so on longer than I have. I've watched Mark's passion for the community through his time on a medic unit and his time now. How long have you been in the EMS Bureau?
Eleven years.
Eleven years as the EMS coordinator. A lot of times, that is a very thankless job, and he comes in and he is very passionate each and every day, serving the citizens, serving our department. And one thing that I think is unique about Mark is that his passion doesn't stop with the Hamilton Fire Department or the City of Hamilton. He wears many hats. He is a big part of his church community. He's a big part of his homeschool community. He's a big part of his foster care community, Fair Board. I could go on and on. And with each community, he shows the same level of passion with each assignment. So, his time on the department, I've seen Mark even step out of his own role and out of his own assignment to help others within the department to succeed and create new opportunities and a better working environment. So, I think he's very deserving of this award.
Whenever you see this guy, you got to smile. And then you'll say hi to him. And then he'll say something back to you, which kind of leaves you going, wow, where did that come from? But you know what? He's right. He raises people's spirits. He's a great firefighter, EMS coordinator, great family man. And I'm not kidding. You might just be honking to the horn and a wave, but whenever he sees you, it makes you feel better. And he's one of us, a great teammate. It's an honor to give you this certificate of recognition, award of Mark Minery, in recognition for being selected for the two thousand twenty-five Public Service Passion for Hamilton Award, signed by myself as mayor and City Manager Craig Bukite. Mark, thank you for what you do. I'm not quite sure what you're going to say, but this will be interesting.
Well, it'll be a doozy. I don't have a problem talking usually, but Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager, I'm extremely blessed. I mean, God has blessed me with the opportunities to do what I do, and I enjoy it. I enjoy being able to help others. I enjoy anytime I get to interact with members of the other department. I'm looking out in the audience, about half of them, you know, are city employees. And dag on, I've worked on projects with all of you, and I haven't helped you. You guys have helped me. And this award could go to any number of you. Sarber, Gunnerson, Liz, Hufford, you know, Lauren, I mean, dag on, Kevin. This award could go to any of you guys. And I'm just very blessed to have the opportunity to serve in a city. This city has been a wonderful opportunity for me to raise my family, my nine children, and support my wife, and it's just been a wonderful career. Still got a few years left. Hopefully, I can be here for a while longer, serving in leadership of the city.
And you do.
And yes, he did say nine children. Okay. Our next award winner is Dave Beenenman for Own the Outcome. Mr. Dave? Dave began his career in January two thousand sixteen as a municipal arborist. Dave was nominated by Liz Hayden. Here's what she had to say. Dave is a top expert in his field, and the City of Hamilton is so lucky to have him. Because of the work completed under his leadership, we have avoided an unknown number of power outages that would have negatively impacted our residences and businesses. While we don't know the number, we know the number's high. This improves quality of life for our residents and improves outcomes for our businesses. But he is so much more than an expert. He organizes community educational opportunities for the kids and adults. He's compiled a lot of great data to help inform decisions on where to plant trees, and his focus is on planting in our neighborhoods with the least amount of trees. He's received numerous substantial grants to increase the number of trees being planted in our community. Dave's positive impact on our community will benefit generations of Hamiltonians.
All right. Dave does a lot of things for the city that you just heard. Along with that, Dave handles thousands of phone calls each year, some good, some bad. Dave always takes care of the citizen with respect, and we handle any problems that occur. Dave mentors four interns now, right now, so he goes through, mentors people in his field. He also speaks lectures at various events and represents the city very well. And you know, when you give Dave his a job, he gets it done. You don't have to worry about following behind him.
You know, when I think of Dave Beenenman, I think of like education. He handles everything with education, whether he's wearing some kind of bug antennae, talking to students, you know, very young students, or talking to adults who are having an issue with some of the trees. He educates. And he and I have walked up and down the street, and he was telling me why a certain pruning had to be done. And I learned, and I continue to learn, and he is all about education. And he does definitely Own the Outcome. So, you've been a real positive to our city, and I just want to thank you for choosing Hamilton. And I'm going to give you certificate of recognition. This is award of Dave Beenenman, in recognition of being selected for the two thousand twenty-five Public Service Own the Outcome Award, signed by myself as mayor and City Manager also signed this. So, you're with your peers who are respecting you, thanking you, and you've earned this, Dave.
I just want you all to know, I've been here a short time. I'm coming up on ten years with the city, and I did have dark brown hair when I started, so you can kind of see where it's led to you. But I'm glad to be here. I'm humbled by this. I'm surprised and just glad for the opportunity to work for Hamilton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I would like to add, when I did call Dave, apparently, he does receive a lot of bad calls sometimes, when I did call Dave to let him know that he had won this award, his first thing was, oh, I thought you were calling to complain about something. So, yeah. So, no, this is a lot better. Okay, so our next award winner is Mr. Tom Baugh for the Sense of Urgency. Tom began his career with the City of Hamilton in April of two thousand sixteen as an engineering technician. In two thousand twenty-three, he was promoted to engineering surveyor. Tom was nominated by Liz Hayden, and Liz says, Tom Baugh embodies the sense of urgency value of our organization and the way he executes his job. He proactively seeks out projects that can benefit from his survey expertise. So, often, we run into an issue and think, why didn't we fix that? Well, he actually is going back and fixing issues that have been needed to be fixed for a very long time. He's methodically going through He's methodically going through city-owned property, records, and completing the survey work to get the issues resolved. Often, this kind of work doesn't get the appreciation it deserves, but I'm hoping that he gets recognized for the many ways, large and small, that is improving our community. He is currently instrumental in moving our housing initiative in Jefferson forward, leveraging his survey expertise to proactively identifying possible issues, much like dead trees, property line questions, and is helping to ensure the final cost of the architectural plans remain low. He's always to help, and he works so fast. Congratulations."
My name's Chad Harville. I work with Todd in the engineering department, and we were talking earlier this week about the service awards, and I just mentioned to him that I thought there were several that he could have been nominated for, but this one for Sense of Urgency was definitely one of those. In working with Todd over the last several years, I have seen him approach every task or project with that same sense of urgency. And by urgency, I don't mean just, let's hurry you up and get this job done and check it off the list and move to the next one, but doing a job in the least amount of time possible while still giving it the care that it deserves and doing it to the best of our ability. And that's something that Todd comes in and does every single day. So, it's a recognition well deserved, congratulations, and I thank you for setting that example in the engineering department.
You know, I've noticed, everybody comes up here with a smile, and it makes all of us smile as well. So, anybody who brings a smile with a sense of urgency and gets the job done, that's one heck of a teammate right there. And whenever I see your name on all these documents, I just know it was done right. Certificate of recognition, award of Todd Baugh, in recognition of being selected for the 2025 Public Service Sense of Urgency Award, again, signed by myself as mayor and signed by the city manager. Thank you, Todd. Now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sense of urgency. Okay, so, our final award, it goes to three gentlemen, Kyle Height, Tim Allen, and Kevin Angst, all electrician ones. Would you all like to make your way up, along with Mr. Tom Adams? So, these young men were nominated by their superintendent of the Electric Power Systems, Mr. Tom Adams. Here's what Tom shared. "We had three electricians step up equally, and it would be great if they could all be recognized as a group, and that's exactly what we did. Over the last several years, a committed effort has been made into upgrading the equipment at the Greenup Hydroelectric Generating Facility. It has been a joint effort of the city of Hamilton staff, both at the Greenup Facility and the city personnel based in Hamilton. It's been an example of teamwork personified, with great strides being made in making the Greenup Facility a reliable provider of electric power to the city of Hamilton. Two groups from Hamilton who have continuously made the trek over to Greenup are the electricians from the Electric Power Systems and the Mechanical Mobile Maintenance Team. These trips typically last five to seven days at a time. Workdays can range from ten to sixteen hours a day. Overnight stays are required, and our team members sacrifice personal time spent away from their families. In the fall of 2024, outage became even more complicated when Greenup Plant Electrician Leonard Little, who everyone calls Smokey, was involved in a terrible car accident that required him to miss an extended period of work. Smokey has always done an outstanding job of preparing for these outages and even stayed involved with phone conferences while he was on the mend. While all of our team members have stepped up, at some point, we have three electricians in 2024 that went above and beyond what we could ever ask for. Mr. Kyle Height, Tim Allen, and Kevin Angst stepped up in a way that deserves special recognition. We first asked for volunteers to make these trips and rarely have any issues having electricians step up, but as the weeks wear, fatigue sets in on everyone. Anytime the volunteer list was slow to get filled, these three guys stepped up. Kyle became Smokey's eyes and ears at the site. He stepped in to make sure all necessary resources were in place and was the lead electrician on a very successful outage. The city of Hamilton Electric Power System is stronger thanks to these three and their dedication. Congratulations."
Yeah, all three of these guys, they're mad at me right now because they don't do it for the limelight or a pat on the back. They do it because they're dedicated and committed to the city of Hamilton Electric. And as was said, it's a sacrifice for these guys, and not only that, their families, we've got a couple wives here, we want to thank the entire families for allowing these guys to... I think out of an eight-week outage, these guys spent four or five weeks out of town. So, they stepped up for us big time, and we want to thank them.
Okay. I've known this guy for a long time. I'll save the stories, but...
That's good, because I don't think you want me to tell them.
I grew up with his brother, lived on Cleveland Avenue, and he was, I think I knew him before he even was born, but be that as I may, I used to see these guys below the street level in the city. And I'd yell down there, and I'd say, Kyle, are you down there? And he was down there underneath the street. And that's his wife, real proud, she's proud of you, you know that, man.
I know.
And I'm sure all the family members are proud of these guys, but Kyle, it's been great seeing you. Really, you're doing some tremendous things. Your mom and dad would be so proud of you. And Tim, Kevin, thank you for what you guys do. But I tell you what, I can't help saying this, but God bless the Commonwealth of Kentucky, because Kyle hates there, you know? But no, thanks, all of you guys. I mean, when you, the three guys who work together get recognized, that makes it like the strength of like a hundred people, when you've got three people working in the same direction, doing the same thing. Now, you guys all want to speak, don't you?
We were worried.
Okay.
This concludes our part from the HR department.
Rich, now's your time. Please bring up your better hat, if you would, please.
I brought my own personal person.
I bet that smells.
A lot of tears in it lately. I'm used to standing here, by the way, you know that, don't you?
I do know that.
Feel better? You want to do it from here?
No. The tie, the lapel pin, and the towel, did you really have to do that?
You are aware that the Pittsburgh Steelers did draft a Hamiltonian.
Yes.
He's gonna be our new running back.
He is, Caleb Johnson. He'll soon be traded to your Cincinnati Bengals. You know, Rich, it is just, you know, you make me smile too. It's like, mostly the time. But, I mean, you started working with Mike Simvisky, is that correct? Was he your city manager when you first started?
Ralph Reichert.
Ralph, okay. All I know is, is you handled some difficult issues early on that were very difficult. And to this day, when somebody gives you a job to do, I mean, you get it done. And even some of the intersections and the traffic improvements that you have made, I mean, turn a left from Columbia Bridge, you know, you delineated lanes, and I think that has saved accidents. And this man keeps accidents from happening, that stops more injuries and even fatalities. Top of Northeast Street, where you've got the 408 stop signs up there, this, things that most people don't notice, and I know, Scott, you're involved in all this stuff too, you know, things that people don't notice that people like you do, just go on and on and on. So, and I know you did some work up in Northern Ohio, is that right? Toledo?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, you were near the Dog Pound then, you're definitely near the Dog Pound. And you didn't become a Browns fan?
Closer to the Lions, actually.
Close to the Lions? You didn't become a Lions fan? You didn't become a Bengals fan? You're ill. Okay. I don't mean that. And I tell you what, like I said, these two people, they volunteered together, and that just is so great to see, whether it's a concert, picking up litter, doing whatever, you folks are a great team. So...
My wife Sally, by the way.
Yes.
Hey, Sally.
You're a lucky man.
I know.
Officer LaMayer proclamation, whereas Hamilton City Council and city administration will have to give recognition and show appreciation to Rich Engel for his work and dedication to serving the people of Hamilton. Whereas Rich came to the city of Hamilton with a wealth of experience as a municipal water and wastewater consulting engineer for various firms from 1978 to 2008, whereas he was hired in March 2008, and in approximately three years, was promoted to the Director of Storm and Sanitary. And whereas Rich continued to earn promotions as the Director of Public Works in 2012, the Director of Engineering in 2017, and finally promoted as the Director of Project Implementation in 2024. Whereas Rich was involved in many impactful projects during his career at the city of Hamilton, including serving as a preliminary engineer for the South Hamilton Crossing Project, securing grant funding for the High Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Intersection Project. And whereas he also assisted with securing grant funding for impactful projects such as the main Millville-Eaton Intersection Project and the main Serial Halterment Intersection Project. Whereas Rich, at the end of his career, must only be led in mobilization and relocation of the historic train depot to where it is currently, at the corner of Maple Avenue and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Whereas Rich plans to enjoy his retirement traveling, mostly camping with his wife Sally, restoring his 1953 Willys Jeep, spending time with his mother and grandchildren, and supporting his beloved Pittsburgh Steelers. We put four E's in Steelers. So, you're larger members. We didn't. And now, therefore, I, Pat Muller, Mayor of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, and members of Hamilton City Council, hereby recognize Rich Engel for his impact and leadership on many Hamilton infrastructure projects, his service to the city, his volunteer work, and we congratulate him on his retirement. We all wish him the best in his future endeavors. Signed by myself as mayor and acknowledged by all the council members behind you, who appreciate you also very much. So, we're gonna give this to you, and it's got a Steelers thing on it. That's...
Hey.
That's right. There you go. All right. Sally, would you like to say a few words first, without him? No? All right. Okay.
She's a fine time. You know, she works.
You deserve it.
Thank you.
Wow, what a journey. First and foremost, I want to thank my wife Sally for all the amazing support and love she has given me for the past forty-seven years. It has not always been easy. Moving the family from a small town in the mountains of Pennsylvania to Toledo, heck, I never heard of Toledo before moving there to work as a consulting engineer. Being young and dumb, but full of energy to begin a career as a municipal consulting engineer, raising a family which I give Sally full credit for doing the bulk of it. As a consulting engineer, I had to be gone a lot. Then deciding to move to southwest Ohio. It would be fun, I told her. Then deciding consulting engineering was not as satisfying as it used to be anymore. Hey, honey, Hamilton needs a city engineer. I think I'll try that. Best decision I ever made. My career took a totally different path, working with many amazing employees who became friends and almost family. Many are here this evening, and I sincerely thank each of you for attending. I truly appreciate your support and friendship, including those who are unable to attend tonight. I'm honored and privileged and proud to have been a part of the renaissance of Hamilton with many projects to improve the community and lives of our citizens. All of our efforts have been accomplished so much during the past decade. Amazing. Now, being seasoned and ancient, it is time to end my career enjoying being with Sally and family, especially the grandkids, and seeing the USA. My last parting advice for everyone is to enjoy each day because you will be standing here sooner than you believe possible. Forty-seven years went by in a flash. Thank you.
Miss you.
It's been fun, Rich. Congratulations.
I forgot Brandon Sarver back there. He's a Steelers fan, too. Brandon, get away from the dark side.
Another one of our superstars, Dana Arthur, is, oh, Purdue Boilermakers, okay.
I wrote this for Rich. I'm not a Pittsburgh fan. It has trains on it, but it did have the P. Rich, don't leave yet. We've got to leave, aren't we? I want you to come up here with us and accept this, on behalf of the city and public works that you, you know, built the foundation for us. This is really...
For all of us. Over.
Well, both of you guys, tell us about the importance of Public Works. You guys are above ground, below ground, ground level, just doing all kinds of things to make our lives safer, better. So, you tell us about Public Works Week.
Sure. So, I'll start. So, Public Works Week, you know, is next week. It's 18th through the 24th, and it's just honoring the Public Works employees. Ours are so special. We've got ninety-three of them, and they're in gas and water, streets, fleets, and sewers. They do so many things on so many levels. And I'm really dialed in with the Public Works. I'm on the American Public Works Board down here, and I know what the different communities are like, and I just, I know how special this one is. I couldn't be any happier to be here. I wouldn't be back if it wasn't for Rich. Honestly, there wasn't a position open in engineering when he brought me back. He brought me back in, he talked it through with Logan, that was the executive director at the time, talked it through with Joshua, the city manager, got me back in here, and just couldn't be any happier to be leading this group. They're so, so wonderful. The superintendents we have have almost a hundred and fifty years of combined experience with Hamilton, knowing what they're doing, knowing the days in and days out, and keeping this place just running the way they are. I mean, we don't have the most money on the planet, but the money that we do have, they get it done. And I just, I couldn't be happier to be a part of that. Wouldn't be here without this man, and that's why I want him up here.
Thanks. Not sure I can talk that, but Public Works is very important. Safety Service is very important. We're right behind them in making sure that it's safe for our community, for traveling, making sure the roads are clear during... for traveling, making sure the roads are clear during wintertime with snow events, making sure stop signs are replaced. Just little things like the mayor was mentioning earlier. It's so critical to make sure that we take care of our community so that our citizens feel safe and are safe.
You know, these guys are 25 hours a day, eight days a week, basically. I mean, when there's a problem, you guys got to show up. And what I have found out, and if I see some guys working, I'll ask them, hey, what's going on here? And their customer service is very good. They also educate. So it's an honor to read this proclamation recognizing National Public Works Weeks, especially to you two guys. Officer La Mer Proclamation. Whereas the mayor, city council, and city administration of the city of Hamilton, Ohio are honored to give recognition for the week of May 18th, 2025, in support of National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals such as Dan and Rich focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Hamilton, Ohio. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, employees, and customer service professionals from Hamilton and local government who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation infrastructure, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Hamilton to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in Hamilton. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Weeks since 1960. The year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Weeks sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Pat Muller, Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Hamilton City Council members hereby designate the week of May 18th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. In the city of Hamilton, Ohio, we urge all of our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Hamilton Government Agencies to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life in Hamilton. Thank you, Public Works.
Now, there's no Steelers thing on here.
I ran applause for all of our city employees.
If you're quick next week, if you're out and about and you see the guys in the yellow shirts, just honk and give them a wave, or if you happen to be somewhere, they're stopped, just say a thank you. Just, you know, say a little hi to them. It'd mean a lot to them. They're great guys. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Now, good audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comment may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when the item is up on the council floor. Individuals who intend to address city council are required to sign in at the table that was outside of the room here. And each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Tina Jones.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've been here, so... The first issue that I would like to discuss is about the Health Department here. I had Legionnaires' pneumonia. Ended up on life support this past January into February. That's a Class B. And I was instructed that the Health Department was supposed to do some testing and things at my apartment. Well, in trying to find out why no one had contacted me, the Health Department said the hospital didn't send a report. Come to find out, the hospital did, January 26. They, the Health Department, finally addressed it March 26. Went over the questions, assuming that, and they said that the Health Commission reviewed it. And pretty much my, they will not be coming out to do any testing. And no further investigation needs to be done. Now, how do you know that if you don't do any testing? So I'm trying to find some clarity in why. And I also was told that I'd have to come out of pocket in order to have a licensed contractor come out and do the testing instead of the complex or the Health Department. So I need to know what direction to go in. And was wondering if you all could help me.
You have a second issue you wanted to talk about, Tina?
Yes.
Okay, let's talk about both of them.
The second one is about Nealon Park Apartments, which is where I live. A few weeks ago, they locked the entrance doors again, which is fine with me. That's not the issue because I appreciate the protection and the safety that, the purpose of them doing this. But it's also an inconvenience and... Well, anyway, they locked the doors, but we have to come out of our apartments and open the door for anybody that comes to see us. And they took away the intercom systems. That's, you know, we still have the equipment. They just put the metal over it. And I think it would be a lot easier, but they don't feel that we deserve anything like that. I have 21 stairs. And I just, like I said, I just got out of the nursing, out of Doverwood Nursing Home recently. And I've been going through some things. So my question, and I have surgery, a four-hour surgery coming up. I will not be able to go up and down 21 stairs to open the door for my nurses and PT and OT and anyone else who may come to help me. So a city official said that I asked to have a sit-down with everyone who made that decision. And I was told it was privileged and not open to the public. And I feel that as a resident, I should have a say in association with the other ones. A lot of people do not speak up because of things like this to deter people from speaking up or getting shut down. And I received the response that the chief of police said, pretty much it is what it is, and I guess there will be no sit-down in keeping everything in place. I don't think that's right. I think whether it be a few of us or individual, because I want to talk to him. And I'd also think if he's interested in living in one of the apartments there for at least three months without paying, without his badge, and supplemental income, and see how things, you know, turn out, how he feels afterwards or anyone else who feels that way. And then, you know what? While he's there, I can show him how to shop at the pantry and other things that people out there have to do to survive. I've been volunteering for the city for 18 years. I don't get out there because I'm getting paid. I don't get out there for journal news or any thing of that. I've been rolling my sleeves up for a long time. Involved with several, several things in the community, in the city of Hamilton. But at the end of the day, I go back to Nealon Park Apartments where none of those issues are being addressed. As a matter of fact, I know some city council people in Cincinnati, and they've been apparently getting a lot of calls from people in Hamilton because they're tired of the good old boy system. They're not getting the help. And that's a problem when people have to go outside their city because not enough people are standing up to certain issues that need to be, you know, stood up. And hopefully, you know, that's just something that I wanted to discuss.
Ms. Jip, I'd be happy to talk with you. And what I'd like to do is have one of our staff folks get your information and gather that. I can tell you, I'm intimately familiar with Nealon Park Apartments and the company that owns and operates them. I worked with them for many years back as part of the police department. I'm proud to say that our work at the police department with the city, those units, 168, those units are significantly safer today for our residents than they were five years ago, four years ago, three years ago. But I'm sure there's more that we can do, and I'm happy to have those conversations. So Ms. Hayden, we'll get your information.
There have been improvements because June 4th would be 21 years that I lived there. So I can tell you a lot about what's going on better than someone else making the decisions or speaking for us or not caring how we feel in general.
Thank you. I look forward to talking with you. Tina, I just want to say, you know, you've served on a lot of boards. I know you've been on the self-board for quite a while.
15 years.
Yeah, and you've, I thank you for your leadership. You and I have talked about a number of issues. I kind of wish there was some kind of a tenants group or a residents group from that area that could...
I used to.
You probably used to lead that, too.
Do that as well.
But please share some of your, some of your views with Liz and let's just see what maybe, we can maybe improve. And we can always improve. So, thank you.
You know, I think it would be nice because we could, if you have the residents thoughts, the police, management, and the residents can work together as far as safety issues.
Definitely.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Sean Clark, but he was here with Dino Witt, I believe. So that takes care of our audience of citizens. Okay, we go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, caucus reports, and meeting minutes. And we're going to go into the committee of the whole, which allows council to ask questions and vie direction and learn more about some of these issues that our city staff has been working on. I'll set the motion. That's a regular meeting. Be recessed. And the committee of the whole will take place.
So moved.
Second, motion of council member Fear, second to council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose safe side. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:02. We now go into the consent agenda. The caucus agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay, we have many presentations that we'll try to cover shortly. First presentations for items 1, 2, 3, and 9 will be done by our city clerk, Daniel Tiedemann. Hello, mayor, members of council, members of the public. I know that we have a lot of items on our caucus agenda, so given that this item is about a musician, I'll be sure just to play the hits. For this item is an honorary street naming application for Del Gray. This request is to rename Vandevere Avenue to Del Gray Way. So he was the founding member and drummer of the country music group Little Texas, which formed in the early 90s. And he was actually born and raised in Hamilton on Vandevere Avenue. And he was also, fun fact, voted most likely to be a rock star in high school. So throughout his musical career in his band, they charted 15 times in the top 10, as well as reaching number one three times. Their three albums, their debut album earned a certified gold certification, as well as their two follow-up albums, Big Time, earning double platinum certification, and Kick a Little, earning platinum certification. As well as being nominated and winning awards from the American Country Music Awards and the Country Music Awards in the early 90s. Lastly, in his solo career, he's also recorded as a songwriter with many other country acts, including Trace Atkins, Gretchen Wilson, Colin Ray, Trey Lawrence, Billy Ray Cyrus, and John Rich. So the application has been reviewed by staff. Here is an aerial of where the honorary street naming would take place. And staff would recommend that council approve this honorary street naming application, mainly because of the significant cultural contribution and achievements through Mr. Gray's music career, his geographical significance to where his childhood home was located on Vandevere, as well as him giving back to the Hamilton community, having performed at River's Edge. And I should also mention that, I believe, the lineup for this summer has been released, and they will be playing on May 31st at River's Edge. So do we have any questions about this item?
Great timing.
Yeah, some good timing. Next up for, this should be item number two. This is a request to rename Vine Street to Tony and Ray Moore Street. As members of council know, that Tony and Ray Moore are the owners of the North End Market since 1982, and they've also been serving the community for over 40 years. Within that space, they've created a space for support, generosity, and connection, as well as hosting many holiday celebrations for over 30 years, most notably Operation North Pole, in which they provide gifts, essentials, and joy to children in the North End neighborhood. So they requested, a street naming is going to be the entirety of Vine Street, and staff also recommends that council approve this honorary renaming application, specifically for the humanitarian efforts and contributions to the North End neighborhood from Tony and Ray, as well as the geographical significance of their store being located on Vine Street. Do we have any questions about this item? Okay. And then, next up for number three is a liquor permit application for Steel City Pizza. This is a liquor, a transfer of a D5J and D6 liquor permit. These permits specifically are for full service, including beer, wine, and liquor, located in a community entertainment district, that is the J that's attached to that D and 5, as well as Sunday sales. Do we have any questions about this item? Okay, and then, lastly for me is number nine, which is a grant applications to the ODNR Nature Works Program. So where council and the city are familiar with this grant program. We've had many applications in the past, and this grant program deals with providing a 75% reimbursement for park improvements. Butler County's funding for this cycle is around $84,000, and staff has decided to make improvements on Jefferson Park. Specifically, a 20-foot by 30-foot picnic shelter, which would cost around $45,000. We're also considering more funding for tables and benches. Just waiting to hear back from the Parks Conservancy about that, as well as a 25% match will be provided by the Parks Conservancy, meaning that this will come at no cost to the city. I believe that is the summation of my report. Do we have any questions about that item? Okay, thank you. Next up for items 4, 5, 6, and 10, we'll have our Director of Engineering, Alan Messer.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. We've got four grant applications here before you today. The first one, the North Hamilton Crossing Ray at Gore... The first one, the North Hamilton Crossing, Ray at Gordon, or Ray Gore, Ann Gordon at North B Street. This is actually a resolution for the TID to apply basically on behalf of the city of Hamilton. It's the same thing we did with the roundabouts that we received funding for from OKI up at Northwest Washington, West Elkton, North B. But, um, this one is for a similar roundabout project, except for at Gordon Avenue, we're proposing a right-in, right-out as opposed to roundabout. We did explore putting a roundabout at Gordon as well. Um, the, I spoke earlier, earlier meeting about the, um, impact that that had on the utilities and the cost and the, um, little number of actual left turns that exist that didn't justify that. But this grant request is for approximately $4 million. The consultant's currently getting a, a more detailed cost estimate together, and if it's $4 million, it would be 25% match, so the city would have a million dollars that would be contributed to the project, and this would be run by the TID. Um, this is what it looks like. This spoiler alert for the, uh, June 24th meeting, the South River Crossing is going to be the preferred, or the recommended preferred location, and that's the roundabout. You can see there at Ray, and then it's difficult to see, but there's, um, the next page you can see, it would be right-in, right-out only at Gordon, which I think will be an improvement to that block of Gordon because it will take some of the through traffic off of it and perhaps some of the, um, any spillover, um, parking that, uh, might otherwise be tempted to go over there. Second of the grants is a connection between Black Street Bridge, which will eventually become a pedestrian bridge when the new bridge goes over the river with North Hamilton Crossing, and River's Edge. Um, it will connect the Belt Line Trail to the Great Miami River Trail. This is also an OKI application. This is one that the city will be submitting. It's up to a thousand, or up to a million dollars. I don't expect it to be quite that much, but, um, assuming it were to come out to that in the estimate, the city's match would be 450,000. Reason this is higher is because this includes engineering costs, whereas we were already doing engineering for the North Hamilton Crossing as part of the project. And this would be 2028, 29 construction. This is where it would be. The nice thing about this, the good thing about the timing is we have Crawford Wing coming in. This benefits their development, also enables us to make that connection now before that area gets developed and there's a building in the way or something that otherwise prevent this connection from going in. This one everyone's very excited about. This is the pilot program I mentioned to you at OKI. Um, first time ever, they're, they are funding resurfacing, and so Park Avenue is our ask, and I appreciate your patience with allowing us one more year to approach Park Avenue. Unlike many of the other grants that I talked about, we're three or four years out. This one is intentionally quick, and so it will be next year's construction. And able to make it so quick, it's limited to just basically the asphalt. This will allow us to go three inches deep, what we consider like a full mill and fill as opposed to the, um, two inches that we sometimes do just to get roads by. And so this is up to $800,000, the grant request. I expect it to be probably closer to half. That will be the actual cost when we get the estimate, and there's zero match to this. Um, all the city had to do to prepare for it was to make sure that the ramps that were handicap accessible throughout the route before we apply. And so you've probably seen some activity out there already, and that's the reason The last is a grant application that's submitted, um, directly to Senator Houston's office, and we received a similar grant to this, uh, two years ago from Senator Brown. This time we're asking for 1.5 million to go towards that North Hamilton Crossing, North Hamilton Crossing River Crossing. Um, this would also cover portions of the cost of the roundabout at Ray that I mentioned earlier, and there's also a roundabout proposed on the other side of the river, which I'll show you here. Uh, this one too has a 20% local match. This is a little difficult to see, but that's what the, um, the crossing will look like with the roundabouts on each side of the river. And then this gives you a, a vision of what the bridge itself might look like across the river. And we'll have much more detailed conversations about the specifics of the aesthetics of the bridge once we get further along in the design, but we had to, the, um, consultants put together a rendering so people could get a feel for what it would look like, and they used existing High Main and Black Street as the, the basis for the, the, um, style, I'll say, that, um, they're proposing for this. Is looking at it from downstream, upriver towards the, uh, low-level dams. A lot of information. Um, I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
You have to be excited about what you're doing right now. That's just so great.
Very excited. And when, when we look at ODOT's website, they like shows projects in the area, and you zoom in on Hamilton and see all of the ones that are programmed that we've received grant funding for, it's awesome. I think we have a good shot at all four of these.
I mean, it's amazing that you earn these grants and you effectively use them to accomplish really important things. We don't waste the money, it's used the way it should be used. Probably why you keep getting more and more grants is because the track record, good track record.
Well, when I was on TID, oftentimes they would come to us and say, we have a project that another community bid on, and they didn't have their act together, so here, we're going to give it to you. So between TID and the city, there's great credibility that these projects will get done.
There really is, and these, these grant applications, I get to get up here, talk about them, but it, I mean, it's a, it's a combined effort, the city clerk, planning, economic development, the engineering team, the consultants, there's a lot of effort that goes into this, a lot of, we're all rowing in the same direction, so it's, it's really fun to be a part of.
Picture's worth a thousand words. Seeing it like that is just itty.
I think we got some good people on the TID that are for us, so Dan is, and Cory's, definitely, likes for him. We're very lucky to have him here, uh, doing that. So I know after every meeting, he walks up and makes sure I'm okay with everything, and let's go have a cup of coffee or something if we need to talk about any, he's just right there all the time, so I think we're very fortunate to have him, so it's good.
I agree. Great partner.
He is.
Are we staying in touch with Senator Houston's office throughout this process?
Uh, we are, actually have a call scheduled tomorrow to talk about the application.
Okay. Are we in competition with others for this 1.5 million?
We are, and I will say that that congressional discretionary spending, it could materialize, it might not. I was actually surprised to see it still in the budget this year. But I think our project saying we're replacing a 100-year-old bridge is, is a very compelling story.
Have we reached out to Senator Marino as well?
So we have not, um, transparency, we missed the deadline for that, they moved it up a month this year.
Okay.
And when we realized it, Houston's deadline was a, a week later, and so we submitted to his, we would, had we submitted, we'd been in competition with ourselves anyway between the two senators, so I think, I think we're okay in having submitted just to the one office.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alan.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
And the next up for item number seven will be our Director of Planning, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. So before you tonight is, um, was a conditional use application that was seen by the Planning Commission regarding 1195 Schuler Avenue for a community event venue. This is just highlighting the property there in red. Um, it is zoned R3, one to four family residence in our traditional neighborhood of the East End. The proposal was to occupy the first floor of the building as a commercial event venue, um, really for a neighborhood use. Again, this was a conditional use application. It also included four variance requests to the Hamilton zoning ordinance. Those are related to, um, a 100% variance request for off-street parking, landscape variance, um, a variance related to the facade materials for the front entrance, and transparency uh, variance for the, some of the windows. Um, Planning Commission took action and recommended denial of this conditional use request, and I'll give you a little bit more information about the nature of the discussion at Planning Commission. Uh, this is, on the right is the existing building. It, again, is a existing mixed-use structure. Upstairs, there is an apartment. Um, the building permits were submitted and is actively being renovated, so the, what was before Planning Commission was just specific to the first floor commercial space. On the left is the rendering from the applicant and the architect regarding, um, what was being proposed. So again, this was a, a community event venue, the, based on building code, the max, uh, maximum occupancy for this space was 100, and, um, the, just based on the existing conditions of this property in the traditional neighborhood, there is zero off-street parking. There is a church and a school nearby that the applicant said they had reached out to about, uh, parking arrangement, um, but at the time of the Planning Commission, there was no written agreement, um, that something was in place to accommodate, you know, folks that may be using this event venue. The purpose would be that customers or residents can rent out this space for private or community use. Alcohol, um, could be served on-site by those who are holding their private event. We had three residents speak at the public, the Planning Commission meeting, and two additional residents that provided, um, feedback to staff ahead of Planning Commission. All five residents spoke in opposition to this. Their main concerns were, uh, the lack of off-street parking, noise, hours of operation, among a few other things. Uh, Planning Commission spoke at length, um, about this, and ultimately, um, again, the recommendation was denial of this use, uh, because of the severity of the variance requests, and I would say most notably the off-street parking, though the hours of operation and some other items were discussed. Um, so the concern again being that, you know, if 100 people show up to this and there's not off-street parking, that they're filling the neighborhood, which is, um, mostly single-family homes that are in this surrounding area with a lot of on-street parking already. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just out of interest, has the inside of this building been renovated? I know that there was some problems there at one point.
So it was, yeah, it was a former bar. Um, to my knowledge, the upstairs is the part that's been renovated, and the first floor has not yet, which is why this application came before the board. Uh, the property owners actually initially reached out about the bar use, which is not permitted in the R3 zoning district any longer, and so then talked to staff and tried to look at what might be possible there, and this was the updated proposal that came through that then ultimately went to Planning Commission.
What could possibly go there? Just asking on it.
Yeah, smaller uses like office use, hair salon. There's a very similar building nearby that has kind of that first floor commercial space, and it's a salon, um, so less intent, less intense uses since it's a, is a residential area.
You know, that block where most of the neighbors were from spoke, and, uh, they kind of built their, their own block there, was the, safety-wise, appearance-wise, and it, it ju, it just didn't fit, especially for the parking. I mean, you've got folks who have two cars in a neighborhood that's probably built for one-car hounds, you know, back in the day, so, but Planning Commission did take its time and heard everybody out, and, um, at this point in time, they, the variance isn't too much, and the parking was, is too much of a problem this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Please, yes.
Lauren, how long ago was, or how long has it been vacant downstairs?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Okay, so not recent, there hasn't been anything in there that you know of?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I can, happy to find out if you'd like to know more specifically.
Yeah, I, I didn't think there had been for a long time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Uh, next up for agenda item number eight will be our Chief of Staff, Ms. Mallory Greenham.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I am here to talk about 1224 Schuler, um, Station 27, former firehouse. This is a First Amendment to their development agreement that was executed in 2021. Um, one of the changes is we kind of loosely referenced, um, short-term rental units upstairs. We're amending it to just be one unit, and we're extending the timeline for their completion to April of next year, although they believe that the first floor, the, um, community space will be open, um, I think, June or July. And, um, we actually went and visited over the winter, it's looking really nice, that's one of the pictures from the bathroom. Um, I'm sure they have much better pictures, I don't know, I didn't take very many pictures, I'm sorry. Um, and they've actually already met the threshold for their minimum level of investment, so really we're just kind of giving them a little bit more time to get the upstairs finished. And they are here, Kate and Heather of Primo Properties, um, are here, if you have any questions for them.
First off, thank you for being here. Any questions for, um...
For me.
...them at this point in time?
Have a very cool building.
We do, we love it very much.
Yeah, you do.
Figure we'll set a tour when you get the first floor open for everybody? Okay.
Thank you for your, putting your resources into this building.
We, we're very happy to do it.
Uh, next up for item 11 will be a presentation by our Director of Utility Operations, Mr. Bill Hudson.
Mayor, council, I wanted to talk about a issue we had at Greenup here. We, uh, a stop log, the rigging beam itself, it was a stop log, we had stuck in a, a slot, and we had to get retrieved and that. So when this happened, um, retrieval costs, you see almost $185,000 to get this issue resolved. Now, first one I want to say, what a stop log is, you see a picture of a stop log, it's 15-foot high, 40-foot long, between two and a half to five-foot thick. You see the people in the quarter, so when you, when I'm talking stop, it, you're talking a big piece of equipment here, and along with the lifting beam on top of it, hung from the gantry crane there. So there's three of them that go in the slot to stop the water into the water passage. So I just wanted to give you the magnitude when you start seeing expensive prices, what hap, so what happened on March 17th while sending the bottom stop log, it got hung up on one side and, and there, and one of the, with the slack, one of the safety crane hooks, it came unlatched, causing it to hang up in the, in the slot, which is a very bad problem. So immediately after that happened, we stopped everything and we, all operations, everyone was notified, unit, unit was already offline. We, we involved the structural engineer in how to get this out of the slot without damaging anything, or, or without hurting anybody. That's just the gantry crane, what that hangs from. Okay? Various pieces of equipment that were part of the recovery effort, two 50-ton air hoist, uh, 900 CFS air compressor to run the air hoist, fit, four 50-ton shackles, we had a structural engineering, professional engineer involved. Our maintenance supervisor, Mike Wallace, came up to the plant, and retrieval was completed by the 22nd. So we had to figure out how to rig up since we couldn't un, you couldn't unhook it and take the chance of something else happening from the one side, so it was a process that we made sure throughout the process that everything was done safe and no one, nothing was damaged. Well, trying to. During the, during the, during the recovery efforts, you see pictures where they, the lifting beam up here, where we had shack, um, where we had the slings that are around it, you saw some damage occur, but we were pulling it back out of the slot and straightening it up. So we had to address getting this repaired. We had to do it in a timely manner because... because without that lifting beam, which you can see the little graphic here, you can't put stop logs in or out of the slots, which means you can't maintain, if you want to take a unit down for maintenance, you can't do that without that lifting beam. So we had to have it repaired, inspected by P and stamped saying that it was repaired properly, and after we did that, you can see the picture on the right, where we have the lifting bags you fill with water, and you actually stress test it to 125% to make sure that it's usable, and no contractor will use a piece of our equipment unless we have those stamps on it, so we have to have that done to the equipment to use it safely, and we know that the equipment itself is safe. But of course, doing, for this process of emergency, we, we, we use contractors we knew were available that could do it in a timely manner, so we didn't go through the bid process, so we're asking that, because of the fact that it gets waived to do this, but, as we were talking, Greenup, this is our Greenup facility where this happened, so, and it is fixed, and we've used the beam since then and do maintenance there already, so everything's back to normal, it's just a hiccup that happens in operation sometimes, making you aware of it.
Please.
Bill, what year was Greenup, Bill?
Commissioned, I think 82 was, was first commissioned, so late 70s design, we've been spending an immense amount of time upgrading that, as you heard earlier, and that, it's an ongoing process, it's not just fixed and done, it's going to take multiple years, and it's, we're probably in the last year of the first 10-year capital plan, and we're developing a new one now for what we found, and, you know, your, what you thought 10 years ago, what prices are, what prices are now are different, and, and that's a very unique facility. It was built, floated down the Ohio and sunk in place, so it's almost like a prefab place, like a Navy ship, it's not like this normal construction, so everything's unique, and the company that originally built it, that, they're long gone, so it's got four or five different OEMs have bought and sold stuff, so to get the equipment and that, it's a process, it's not, they're not go on, pick it off the shelf, it's something you have to plan and engineer, and got a good team there, and a good team here to do that. And anytime we do emergency money, we have to bring this to you like this. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And lastly, lastly, we'll have a presentation from Ms. Tamika Hesrington.
Good evening, council, city manager, mayor, so I am here, once again, with more CDBG, just regular stuff, business, I'm here this evening specifically presenting a substantial amendment to amend fiscal year 1920, which is CDBG, CV funds, 23 through 24, and 24 through 25, CDBG funds. The funds to be amended are unexpendable funds that have come from those fiscal years in particular, we are amending funds for housing contractual, public facility contractual, public service activities, and public facility improvements. The CDBG funds are also for demolition and renovation, and that'll be occurring at the Boys and Girls Club. So you'll find here a very detailed list of what is being amended, amended, and as I said, it's just a collection of unexpendable funds from the previous fiscal years. The public service activities that'll be occurring through these include, like I said, for CDBG, CV, will be for Boys and Girls Club, there's funding for Butler County Regional Transit Authority for transportation, and then also funds for fitness center to conduct a mural, a public facility improvement at Living Water Ministries, and this is actually a lot easier than last spring's, spring's amendment, so do you have any questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations.
Thank you. I'll set the motion at the committee, the whole will be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion to Councilmember Nab, second to Councilmember Ryan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:33. I'll set the motion, then we come, I'm going to set the motion at the regular meeting, be reconvened.
So moved. Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second to Councilmember Nab, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:34. We now go into council actions pertaining to legislative items, I'll set the motion on that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move in a note you made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second to Councilmember Nab, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:34. We now go into council actions pertaining to legislative items, I'll set the motion on that as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move in a note you made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second to Councilmember Fear, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:34. We now go into new legislation, agenda item number 13, first reading emergency ordinance involving properties located at 825 Maple, and 818, 829, and 906 Ledlow.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the disposition of properties located at 825 Maple Avenue, and 818, 829, and 906 Ledlow Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and fee waiver agreement and related documents for said properties. City of Hamilton property owner, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati purchaser, first reading.
Thank you. Now go to agenda item number 14, that's a resolution, excuse me, involving IBEW collective bargaining agreement.
A resolution approving the terms and conditions of a successor collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 648, AFL-CIO, IBEW Local 648, and authorizing and directing the execution of said collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, obviously, Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second to Councilmember Vaughn, any discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we now go to Audience City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just acknowledge, in addition to the public ser, public service awards that we presented tonight, the HR staff recognition, Rich Ingalls retirement proclamation, our Public Works Week acknowledgement, and the National Police Memorial Week honoring that tomorrow will, will mark our first of two employee cookouts, again, just a way to honor and acknowledge the amazing dedicated city staff of over 650 public servants here in the city. We appreciate all the work they do 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, to make our community a better, safer place. In addition, I'd also like to acknowledge our Law Director, Letitia Block, for an excellent presentation earlier today, before the ordinance review commission regarding medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis. This was the second presentation done this year, the previous presentation was done in February, and that was a follow-up, some work that we did at the end of last year. In between the February ordinance review commission meeting and this morning's meeting, there have been a couple activities that occurred, including a meeting between members of city council and our staff with the Ohio Cannabis Coalition, that was in March, in April, there were a couple of members of council, as well as city staff members, who went to a few neighboring communities and toured multiple cannabis facilities, and then, of course, the meeting this morning. State rules continue to, to develop, including division of cannabis control, the rules are changing and fluid, there is active and ongoing legislation at the State House, including Senate Bill 56, House Bill 96, and House Bill 160, all pertaining to adult-use cannabis. And then finally, there is still a pending suit here locally in the Butler County community with another jurisdiction, all of which that we're, we're tracking and following very closely, and I appreciate Ms. Block's counsel and advice that has helped us consider this issue in a very thorough and deliberate way. The, the meeting concluded today with a pledge to come back, city staff to come back within 90 days, to offer to the ordinance review commission a variety of ways that could be considered to amend the current prohibition, to reduce the prohibition without lifting it completely. So we look forward to bringing back that information within the next 90 days. I know there were some members of, of audiences citizens that were at the meeting today, and we encourage people to come out, to share their thoughts for and against, and just in general about this issue before the ordinance review commission, which will inevitably lead to a recommendation of some sort to come back here to council at some point in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Audience City Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
First off, I'd like to congratulate all the students from Hamilton High School who graduated today, they've been an amazing class, both athletically, academically, and along lines with all the fine arts that go on. I want to point out one in particular who I'm very fond of, Josh Young, who will be going on to a trade school, he is an overachiever, I'm very proud of him, congratulations, Josh, and to all the 2020, 2025 graduates. Also, along the lines of Law Enforcement Week, thank you, guys, you guys are always protecting and serving, serving our great city, despite the dangers of your craft, you answer the calls daily, your successes are not given enough recognition, but note that we are behind you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, please. Just a reminder that this Saturday at noon is the dedication, honorary dedication of the veterans banners that are still being installed throughout the city. Many calls are coming in, is where is the banner located? We will have the, the map, the template online after all of the banners are installed. This year, we will have over 630 proud veteran heroes that will be on display until after Veterans Day in November, and then we'll reopen the application for the new banners that would be applied for, for 2026. So, the, the community, the, the areas that have supported our banner program, other communities that are calling me and saying, how do you do that? It is very, very rewarding, so, thank you to everyone, you're all invited to join us at Armstead Park at the corner of Main and D Street, the ceremony will start at noon and end up right around 1 o'clock, thanks very much.
Tim, this is the third year, right?
Yes, it is, Caroline.
And how many banners did you start with the first year?
The first year, we had 126 banners, which we thought was just off the charts.
And now you're 630.
And now we'll have 630 installed after, after this week, so, again, our, our thanks to the city, our thanks to the Hamilton Community Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, all of the other collaborators in, in getting the banner program, which is, which is done locally here through our design company, and also through our banner company, so, we're most proud and can't say thank you enough to all of the different people that are supporting this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to couple with, Tim, this Saturday evening at 6 o'clock, I am teaming up with the Hub to do a celebrity bartending night, where all the proceeds will be going to Tim's banner program. Thank you very much for doing that, Tim, you have made a huge impact with this, and I appreciate your efforts, and, man, I made the decision, Hollywood and I made the decision together to support your banner program.
Thanks, y'all.
Anybody else? I want to say the, you know, the Police Department Honor Guard had a fundraiser recently at Municipal Brew Works, and that raised funds for the Honor Guard, which does add a lot of patriotism and symbolism to the events, including Memorial Day, Memorial Day this year, the parade and the, will be, will be recognizing Persian Gulf War veterans, Desert Storm, Desert Shield, so if you know someone who was in that particular conflict, we will recognize them and get them in the parade if that's what they would like to We are also celebrating some kind of neat 10 years of art space on May 30th, those of us who were on council back in that time, that was, you know, that was difficult decisions and practices were made to, to, to keep that building, although, we're not the ones who actually had that decision to keep that building, but we're the ones that tied it to art space, which resulted in a live-work, and really a treasure in downtown, and it's due what Dan Arthur recommended, you see a public works person, wave at him, say hi to him, drive carefully around him, and, please, right, and, you know, just get out and enjoy Hamilton, Ohio, you know, here in May of 2025. All right, request to go into executive session, Mr. City Manager.
There is, Mr. Mayor, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official.
Your motion to city council go into executive session for that stated purpose given by the city manager.
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor Councilmember Nab, second to Councilmember Lauer, roll call vote on that motion to go into executive session.
Muller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
At 7:45, we're going to executive session, I'm out of executive session just to adjourn